We're ready to judge.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It's one thirty P M., August the twenty second. I'll go ahead and call it our budget hearing, I guess, to order as we discuss the upcoming twenty twenty six county budget. And, Mary Jane, I guess we'll do a roll call.
We can. Okay. Judge Ratnall?
President.
Commissioner Moya?
President.
Commissioner Morales?
President.
Commissioner Solis?
President.
And Commissioner Gasso?
President.
We have a court, Judge.
Thank you, Lady Jane. Pastor Roger Minner, thank you for joining us this afternoon in our invocation.
I especially want to be here today when we talk about pledges and dollars. They're a really different creature. You value that, isn't it? We can see Thor's direction this morning, or this afternoon. Our Father can provide us rest. We come into your presence this day with the desire and the need to quiet our hearts and our minds and reorient ourselves toward you as we prepare for the work before this court. Grant us, Father, the ability to turn down the volume of the distractions of the immediate so that we may see the future. May your guidance speak today to our leaders as you have spoken in the past. May our leaders today be receptive to your voice as they seek to serve the community and the difficult decisions that they must make today to prepare for our future. May wisdom be granted to them. May patience be theirs in abundance, and may peace come from their efforts to honor you. And we thank you, Father, for your hand which both leads and protects, and in Christ's name we humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I was mentioning, this public hearing will be the first of two, as we discussed, and move forward approving our final budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Any members of the public? I see a lot of department heads and elected officials, nobody from the public that wishes to speak at this time, so we'll, uh... You know, we've gone through this exercise every year for the last fifteen years, sixteen years. It seems, uh, every year it seems like it's a difficult process. When you depend on your mineral production for bringing the value, you're bringing most of the property taxes in year after year, and you see those diminishing year after year, it has become a difficult process. We've had retractions in the past. I think initially we might have had a force of maybe four hundred employees. I think we're down to maybe two eighty to three hundred, depending if you include our grand employees and part timers. But, uh, so the majority of our tax revenue goes into court personnel, and that's usual, pretty common with every county or government or a school district, or so personnel is a major portion of our expenses. We, this year, we, because we have a two hundred million value drop in minerals. The current year, we have three hundred million in mineral value, which will, for every hundred million dollars in value, we get close to a million dollars in property tax revenue. So, this current proposed fiscal year, our mineral valuations went down to just under a hundred million, ninety-four million dollars. The overall values are pretty close to or similar to our current budget, but that inequity was made up through real property, mainly through the commercial properties in our, in our community and in our county. So, the locals would be picking up the tab for the loss in mineral values. And so I was very hesitant to increase the tax rate because that will fall entirely on the local property owners. So, I decided to leave the tax rate as it is. Unfortunately, we do have some debt service. Fortunately, or not, it's not an unfortunate thing. We do have a considerable amount of debt service. And in twenty twenty four, because of the projects that we want to build through our, our community and good projects, our fire station, the Romeo Arena, our sheriff's department, apartment office upgrade, we wanted airport improvements. So, a lot of worthwhile projects that will help us in the future. The debt service on that certificates obligation required three cents, basically, to be transferred from our general fund to our INS, and that resulted in a three hundred thousand dollar drop in revenues, potential revenues to the general fund. Combined with our current budget, that we are dealing with almost a million dollars of deficit spending that is having to be balanced with our fund balance, that, of course, makes it a considerable amount to sustain. And I think yesterday we had to transfer some of our remaining fund balances to, to cover some of those expenses, that end-of-the-year expenses that become hard, hard to cover. In that respect, I, we definitely need to cut. Our proposed budget includes cuts of about six hundred thousand dollars. So, we'll be down to about a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. But unfortunately, it does include some personnel. I think last year about this time, we made a commitment to those employees that have participated in Operation All-Star, that we would cover their, the whole year for them, hire them, and, 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 in hope that Operation All-Star would continue as far as administration, and we could keep them on for, you know, an additional time. Court administration has gone away. There's not been very many arrests, and so that funding for that has completely dried up. So, I think that affected four employees, very valuable employees, and so those in my court budget were removed, those positions. We also had a lot of good employees that are part timers, that helped us, you know, run the departments efficiently, whether it's the food pantry, the golf course, we have the airport. So, we had several of those that unfortunately I always reduced to having to cut them to try to see how we could balance the budget. I, I did entertain larger cuts to see in the end how we can continuously be in a balanced budget and not rely on our fund balance, and that basically would require additional cuts from every department in the general fund. Our Rhode and Bridge Fund, with the tax revenue that we are bringing in, is, is in the black. It does not require much attention. Our Water Works, they're managing with the revenues that are coming in. Of course, our INS is covering some of the debt service for the, for the water plant and the sewer plant, which are very vital projects for our community, and, and so we're taking care of those payments through INS. But overall, they're managing their workforce and within the revenues that they bring in. So, that left the general fund. The general fund, which is the largest fund in, in our county, we've been in the red for, for many years now and relying on, on the fund balance that we had over the years. We've been able to manage. So, in the end, our general fund is made up of, about forty percent is made up of property taxes, and sixty percent we rely on revenue streams that are not as, I guess, would be a little bit more volatile or not as secure and, and coming up every year, and that was the case this year. We were relying on amusement redemption machines to bring in a certain amount of revenue, and, and that didn't happen. Less than half came in, and I guess we were short about five hundred thousand dollars, and that certainly augmented the deficit we were already incurring. You know, I've been speaking with the sheriff, with our jails. We were counting on, of course, federal prisoners to, to bring in additional revenue, and we had budgeted two point six million dollars. We are not going to get there. We're going to be short, maybe two point two, maybe three or four. And that's just, that's just the, the reality of, of, you know, these, these revenue streams are not as secure as the property tax. So, from year to year, it may shift. We, we had a good year with our sales tax revenue. It was higher than anticipated, but next year could be the, the complete opposite. And so in the end, I think we, we need to understand that the amount of personnel that we have, we're not going to be able to sustain that with our current property tax revenues as they are. We've worked hard to bring in additional revenues. We, we started, you know, we bring in a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, from our franchise fees. Never had done that before. So, we've looked outside, but there are just a certain amount of, of areas that, that we can bring in more tax revenue. So, the current budget includes, and we also, as a court, as a county, have been very generous, especially to our young kids in the community, and we, we made it, and that was commissioner's court decision, when we made some agreements with the wind farm companies that we direct some of these monies to, to the kids. It's been a very good program, and we're going to continue that. There is a reduction in, in monies that I budgeted for these organizations, such as the county fair. We contributed to scholarships in our community. But when you're faced with either heading additional positions of county personnel or pausing our very generous contributions to the community, you know, it, it is, it is difficult to, to, to continue and say, well, we can certainly give money away to these organizations, but at the same time, we're going to let more people go in our county. So, these are difficult calls, commissioners, in the end. You know, I propose this court, this, to the court, this budget. We can, you can look at it and see. Just recently, you know, the last few days, we've had requests for capital outlay. There are basically no money now for capital outlay. We've got equipment needs that can't be met. So, the way the budget is, seems to be every year, will never be able to give us a potential cost of living adjustment to, to the employees unless in the future or now, that somehow, or we get some, which would be a great hope, some drilling activity that would bring up a lot of revenue to our county. We're never going to be able to adjust our, the salaries that our personnel deserve. So, that's where we're at. Where, with this budget, we'll be three hundred thousand dollars short.
As I was thinking, Judge, we continue operating on a deficit. When are we going to be able to take care of the employees that are going to stay here beyond? When are we going to give them that, that living adjustment, right, the cost of living increase? And, you know, we've had inflations yearly based, especially this past year. So, when are we going to be able to take care of, of our employees if we continue operating on a deficit? Now, I believe our fund balance has dropped to the fourth. Is that right, Judge?
We, and the auditor can speak to that. We, we have trouble at the end of every budget year, so...
I'm sorry, Judge.
No, go ahead.
I just want to add to it that you talked about this, we have to do some CDs, cash some CDs to make payroll for this, uh...
This pay, this payroll.
And Monday I have an item in the agenda for our royalty revenue that we've had for a year since we've been here. It's like a million dollars, and I want to request to cash that one in so we can finish out the year. There's not very much room after that, and, and next year is just going to be the same what we're seeing here without those extra CDs.
Yeah.
So, it's not pretty.
So, I think what happened this year, we were relying on revenue to come in. It didn't come in, and we were already definitely in a deficit budget. So, that was compounded by the fact that we're nine hundred thousand dollars to start off, hoping that everything that we budget comes in, which it didn't. And, and then we have additional expenses that come in during the year. So, that one million in the, a deficit turned into a two million dollar deficit when those revenues didn't come in. So, that, that's why we had to cash in a million dollar CDs, because we're...
And we had some hope with those solar farms that were going to be coming in, those five projects, and those are not going to be coming in either, so that's, that's our, our future.
You know, that's what we talked about. I believe we talked about this last year, Judge, that we had a lot of, like, uh...
At the end of the tunnel.
At the end of the tunnel.
It seemed that way.
It seemed that way, but at the end of the day, you know, we canceled out, new administration, new ideas, right? That was beyond our, our control, our court's control.
There, there are still some projects that may come in, but they will be delayed. We're looking, the latest, maybe twenty-nine, twenty, or twenty-thirty.
Now, we're talking about twenty-nine, Judge. We have, you know, we're in the four, four point seven. Are we going to be able to sustain and survive, you know, with those four million dollars four years from now?
I don't know for sure, but probably with the expenses that have been coming in as far as for repairs. I, I was talking, and I know we've been tabling the, these bills for the environmental on the landfill. I mean, so we have, I was speaking with a team this morning. He says, look, these are immediate, immediate needs that I need. Seventy thou, seventy-two thousand for the compactor. We owe thirty thousand in invoices. That's a hundred. The dozer needs about fifty thousand dollar worth of repairs. That's a hundred and fifty. And he's down to one dump truck at the landfill. So, we're looking, he, a minimum of two hundred thousand dollars that basically is not included in the budget. He's asking us for entertaining that to be included in the budget. So, what's going to give? I mean, how, how do we, do we, yeah, so these are the choices that we're, we're having to make. Now, we, we can't operate as a county without a landfill, but we know we borrowed some money to, to buy equipment. Do we make the choice and say, okay, we're going to prioritize, prioritize this equipment and purchase it with, with that money? I know there's other needs, so it's, uh, these are difficult choices. How do we, if that equipment is not operating, are landfill basically closed?
And, and Judge, I did speak with our bond counsel, Dan Martinez, and I could probably, you know, revisit it with him. But when I had asked him about those, maybe two, three weeks ago, if we could use those funds, he told me it was not part of the regional...
You have, it has to be for new equipment.
Well, this is the dump truck. New equipment for Rhode and Bridge, but we didn't specify Rhode and, uh...
Oh, for environment and...
For environment, so...
So, that would, so then that would not apply, and we, we'd have to find, we'd have to include this in our capital outlay for this year. So, that's an additional two hundred thousand dollars that, that it's not included in the budget.
So, that'd be five hundred?
So, we'd under five hundred.
And that, I did bring it up, but I, I'm just thinking, right? You weren't, that was the day that you had a doctor...
Oh, yes. So, that's why I know, I, I, it makes perfect sense, yeah. We have to be specific on how we use it. So, yeah, that's the reality. So, that would place us, if we don't add anything else to, if we approve this equipment, it'd be half a million dollars that we'd be...
We're back up to, you know, we continue to go up, nothing brings it down. You know, something always comes up. We continue to go up. I mean, it's a tough situation, Judge, but I, I think, in my opinion, it's been, we've been blessed and lucky to be able to, to keep every position, you know, since I was here, in my tenure that I've been here. But, you know, we're running down to, to a point where, until when, you know, are you going to be able to afford them? Until we run out of the fund balance?
Yeah.
Is it today? Is it two, three years from now until we finish that fund balance, and then what are we going to do? You know, so that's the question that I think, you know, we should all ask ourselves, you know. What are we, what is, what is it that, that, that is the most, I guess, responsible thing to do? Is it, yes, it's tough eliminating positions, always a hundred percent. But we're, you know, we want to have some money for emergencies. We want to have a fund balance. You know, I, I would, I definitely wouldn't want to be left at zero. You know, that's for sure.
Yeah. How much, who was your, where we called department names? Any other comments?
On the scholarship, the fifty thousand we took off, is that part of the tax abatement that they gave us from the windows?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so on the abatement, it kind of states that we have to use that money towards something like that, right? We can't just put it...
Well, it's at the discretion of the commissioner.
Okay, so it doesn't state that?
Yeah.
It's like you get a call from him that we need to maintain that road with that money. So, I thought that if we take it in the fifty, I mean, we need to utilize it somewhere, you know, which I'm not for taking it from the scholarship fund because it's...
Well, absolutely, I know, yeah.
For the kids, I think...
Certainly, yeah, and I think no other administration has been as generous with, with our kids, with the Health County Fair. And so that was something that the commissioner's court, you know, prioritized to make sure that, you know. In fact, the county, we, we've taken the lead on the Boys and Girls Club initially. The school district was partnering with, with the county with the Boys and Girls Club. They decided to not participate a few years ago, and the county, we took and accepted the challenge of, of continuing and helped them out. And, of course, the golf course is something that the school district has wanted to partner with, for sure, as a quality of life and also as to help the kids with their golf team, and we hope that will continue. I've heard one thing that, well, if we take this out, they'll take that out. I haven't picked that in the spirit of, of what we were trying to do when, when we said we'd take that on.
I mean, I wasn't a part of that when the commissioner's court made that decision. I mean, maybe we should bring it back and decide again as a commissioner's court, being that I'm...
You got some money on, on speaker?
So, yeah, maybe we can bring it to commissioner's court and decide from there what we can do for that money, you know.
Well, we can place it back in the budget, I'm sure, that, that's something that the court wants to do, and...
I mean, definitely, we have...
Yeah, that, that's, that's something.
Yes.
So, we'll have this budget hearing, and we'll make, there'll be announcements. There'll be reports.
Congratulations.
And, yeah, so certainly if that's a priority, we can bring that back and vote on it on the A. Yeah. So, if anybody wants to come up first from the audience, the department head, Judge?
That's why I stand here. Okay, uh, well, good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, for the record. Justice of the Pice, Precinct Two, while they're green. Judge, I know, and Commissioners, that the position that I, that we have for the second clerk was part of the, the grant. And I know you guys weren't able to put her in the, in the budget for this year. But I just wanted to let you all know that I, I appreciate that, that you guys helped us out with having a second clerk in our office. And we do need that second clerk. But like I said, I'm just here to plead my case. Whatever y'all decide to do, we respect that, right? But just a little history of what we do that y'all know, just, you know, to bring it back. We do civil court cases. We do debt claim cases, citations. We take payments for citations. We prepare EPOs, which are emergency protective orders when they're needed. Just last night, yesterday, Benoni, I had to stay after five working on a protective order because those are emergencies, so we have to prepare them at whatever time that they're needed. We work on peace bond courts. We do have, like I say, we work on arrest warrants, which is paperwork, and we do take payments. So, maybe for all, you know, all this time, the offices have been okay with one clerk. I think it works better with two, being that, like we say, time changes. The town is growing, and we do have more phone calls, more arrests. Maybe we're not having, we're not seeing arrests from the ones that we were talking about for the, the grant, right? With border crossing and stuff like that. But we do have a lot of local arrests, and all that information goes into computer, into the system, and especially like the debt claims, that, that's a lot of paperwork that has to go into the, into the computers. So, back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two seventy-five was collected for the year. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-three thousand was collected for the year. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a hundred and fifteen thousand was collected for the year. This year, so far, eighty-nine thousand. So, I know that, and I'm not speaking for my office, but I know that Precinct Two does bring in revenues. I'm not sure if those revenues can be used. I know that they go, go to Rhode and Bridge.
Yes, and they are being used, and, and with, with your, your office's hard work, that kind of makes the budget work for, for Rhode and Bridge. So, like I mentioned, Rhode and Bridge, we're, we're good with Rhode and Bridge. There hasn't been any adjustments there. So, I wish we had more funding. I know the commissioner wants to have more funding for, for especially for road construction, and I think to be able to balance the budget, I think they did lose five thousand dollars each from, from the road construction line item that they have. So, other than that, their personnel, but it's due to your hard work, and it makes a big difference.
And, and like I know, I know Precinct One and Precinct Two are one of the biggest precincts that would be more revenue, being that we do cover more highway area. It's not because anything else, but we do cover more highway area. So, we, sometimes we see like less citations coming in, but, I mean, I appreciate the new administration. We've been getting a lot of more citations in, so we have a lot more work. So, like I said, all those citations that are brought in have to go into the system, you know, handbrake, and then to the computer. And like I say, it is a lot of work, and I think an office that brings in a lot of, you know, revenue and has a lot of courts, because we do hear courts, Judge, and, you know, maybe once or twice a month. We do hear courts, peace bonds, peace bonds are something that we do like randomly. Like if somebody comes into the office and they have an issue, we do it randomly. So, I mean, at least I'm asking for part-time, if that'll work for you all. If it can be, I know it can't be full-time, but at least part-time, if y'all can consider it, we would appreciate it. But again, like I say, I know most of the offices run with two clerks and, you know, more than two clerks, two or, or more, and JP's have only had just one. But like I say, I'm speaking for my office that if y'all can at least give me clerk to stay there at least for part-time, I would appreciate it. If not, thank you very much for helping us out.
I appreciate your, your answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we at? The three employees from the, the, those departments that are getting cut? It's two full-time and one part-time, right? What's the total?
Three, three full-time, one part-time.
Three full-time?
Yeah, two, two clerk from JP, one and two, and then one to the district clerk.
To cut right now, the ones that are...
Yeah, so it's JP Precinct One, the clerk, JP Precinct Two, clerk, uh, district clerk, clerk, three, and a part timer from, uh...
No, no, but I refer to their office, like how much would we, if we leave them at full-time?
How much, how much is the cut?
Yeah.
So, with, with benefits, about a hundred and fifty thousand on full-time?
Because what worries me is that that's what we survive off of Rhode and Bridge. We cut them, we're going to lose tremendously.
We, we just...
Further, and oh, the next year, we're going to come back and get, what, a twenty thousand for Rhode and Bridge?
Yeah, what the court had decided last year was, you know, they, they received less than a week notice that there were, the court administration aspect of all that was not going to be funded. The commissioner's court decided to say, you know what, it's not enough of a notice. We'll keep them on for an entire year. Hopefully, things will turn around, or all that will contribute, so that's... So, I took it as that, is when I formulate my budget, you know, we're not getting court administration, and, and the court did say for one year, and that's why those were in my budget.
Mr. Solis, how much, do you know an exact number that we have on the fund, on our fund balance currently?
As of our last, we have, we have the treasury report, commissioners, and, and we can lower that by what we extended. So, if you remove, let's see, let me get that for you.
It should be around eight million dollars minus the things that we have committed for different things, which brings it down to maybe about between three and four. So, you know, just do some quick math there on, if you're a million dollars, you know, taken out, it's going to last two, three years, and that's it.
So, we were right at six. We removed from the three, almost four million dollars of the CO that's included in the treasury report, and we unfortunately had to cash in a million dollars, so we're down to five, maybe less. So, we're, we're down with the four, the four rates that we talked about. That's where we're at, commissioner.
And if we continue at this rate, that'll last, lasts us...
Two years.
Three, four years.
Yeah, I mean...
It depends if, if the numbers come in correctly as projected.
Yeah. Well, and all those are projections, but it's one of those things where you either, you know, either pay up now or you pay up later, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something either now or later.
And what do you mean by we, we're going to have to do something?
We're going to have...
It's what nobody wants to hear, and eventually we're going to have to cut the station.
Yeah, yeah, just for...
You know, it's just one of those, nobody, you know, I'm like the Grim Reaper for this, but yeah, that's just the reality.
I mean, that's, that's what I, that's what I mentioned earlier, so that's what I'm talking about, so I'm just making sure, you know, something from the treasury.
And it's kind of tough, and, you know, the sheriff's here and, and the fire chief, and they're not going to be happy. But our, our county, half of our, more, half or more than half of our, our employees are first responders. So, you can only take away from this other half so much. So, what are you saying? You're going to remove, you know, it's tough decisions that y'all have to make, but it's there. It's just the, the reality.
I, I think we've never, you know, the time that I've been here, and certainly we, we have been through these issues before, and we've never, you know, tried to degrade whether or by, by, by removing an employee from the sheriff's department And we've never, uh, you know, tried to degrade, uh, whether or by, by, by removing employees from the sheriff's department or the fire department for, you know, for
Yeah.
all the reasons that we can think of. And I think I did not include any reductions
Right.
in those two departments. We never have. But, you know, there may be a point where we could say, uh, we, you know, our department may be too big for what we can afford.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying to do that, I'm just saying that that is a rea, you know, there is of the staff, half or more than half is from there, so for people to understand.
I, I think we're also receiving a lot of help, uh, from the state, uh, for the sheriff's department and, and of course, our county attorney. SB twenty-two, uh, is, is a, is a grant that certainly being very helpful in addressing the salaries of, of those employees. And certainly, if, if we, uh, remove any positions, uh, they may take us out of being able to apply for, for those funds. So, we have to be very careful how we address, especially the sheriff's department and, and the county attorney's office, uh, to see that we do not violate and, and make us ineligible to apply to those grants. So, and that, that's something to take into account for those two departments also.
It's that current cut type of thing is, is, yeah.
See, and that's why I ask you, because, you know, we, we need to know what the reality is, right?
Yeah.
What we're facing, whether we want to face it, or, you know, we didn't face it two years ago, do we want to face it today or are we gonna face it three years from now? You know, that's, that's the question.
You can only reduce supplies and training so much.
Well, I, I, I didn't cut any supplies, uh, we're, we're down to the bare minimum for the most part. I think we do, I think where we can save, uh, some funds, uh, all departments is on fuel. Uh, I think there's been a, a, a tendency for us to think fuel is just, is get in the car truck and, and drive. Uh, for all departments, I, I think we can certainly do much better of how we track, uh, fuel purchases, fuel usage in all departments. Because right now, they're basically not tracking of, of how departments are being using those. Uh, we could, and it's, it's a large amount of, of our, our supplies budgets. Sheriff, I see you sitting in the front row. Any comments, Sheriff? I know.
I think, uh, I have submitted for the EIGH, one of them, I'm working on the female job, so that's been submitted. The marshals have called me, they received it, so it's a matter of
I know, and, and, and that what may offset, hopefully we can, uh, get those, uh, rate increases
Yes.
for, uh, for those inmates. But I, we, you and I had that discussion a few weeks ago, it's just the reality of, of the apprehension circuit down.
Exactly, and it's affected a lot of counties, but it's picking up and, and, uh, until ninety days, I should get a response. And hopefully, I, I know it, there will be an increase, it's just a matter of
So, I, I kept, I'm hopeful, so in the budget, I kept your revenue stream at two point six as, as, as we had it this year. And certainly if we can reach that, that goal, that will certainly help our, our budget.
Of course.
And, uh, but, but yeah, if that was your thing, I understand your worries. And, uh, so, we do have to have some, some type of, of fallback, right? If, if we're short half a million or seven hundred thousand, and then you're short, and then
Yes, and I understand, but, so, and, and I, I should, there's one for the, for the female job, hopefully in about two weeks.
Okay.
So.
Now, uh, we are in the final process of, so, of activating the, the twenty-five grant. So, we have four deputies and four detention officers with that grant.
Yes.
And I think, uh, I think we, are y'all working on that? I know we submitted the final FSR today
Yes, we did.
for the twenty-four grant, so we, we have a week to, to take care of that. And so that
And if not, the employees understand us, the reason we, but hopefully everything is
But, and, and, but, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll try to see if we can, uh, activate that.
Yeah.
Because, uh,
Yes.
I think you're the authorized official and
Yes, yes, we are, and we've been communicating with us.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, we're sure you communicate with, with our consultant to make sure that, uh, we can, uh, get that activated.
Of course.
And, and maybe provide him access, some type of access to where, right now, he's not, doesn't have any access to, to be able to see what
Oh, I see.
how the grant, or what holes are available or not.
Okay, yes, we'll, we'll do, do, so, thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Judge, may I?
Yes. Amy, don't.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Um, this is pretty much an introduction for me, if, uh, to come and fight for my first
Of course.
And losing my last employee on the entire, okay, so this is my last
Well, I mean, yes, we, we all care about our employees, it's, it's
And, and I completely understand, I would never want to be in your shoes right now, it's terrible, but I just need to fight. I'm losing one of the clerks, one of the one, one of the four that's losing.
All right, yes.
And I understand, I understand what the situation is, but it's just my obligation to come and fight for it. So, um, just not to fight for it, but just to ask if there's anything that can be done, I'm going to take part-time. If not, changes are coming, and we'll just see what the changes are. But, um, I just, it's traditional, I didn't want to, I'm experiencing it for the last time.
Yes.
But the hearing will be on Monday, so that's my
We appreciate your service all these years.
So, so I just want, if, if anything can be done, as, as maybe leaving here part-time, I, I appreciate that too, but I just wanted to
You know, our, I, it's, our part-time employees, all the employees are exemplary, but they're really good. Uh, I've, I've, of course, our food pantry, uh, Ms. Adams is there, uh, you know, might have to rely on volunteers. But, yeah, it's difficult, uh, it's, so
I understand completely, but I just wanted to come up here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Going back to the part-time for the food pantry, have you ever done a food pantry recently, like to see how they operate?
It's a lot of work.
I, I don't know how we expect one person to run that department, because there's so much to do. And that's a service we provide for the people that can't afford it, and, you know, that's a big thing that
Well, there is, uh, there is the, uh, which is paused for a while, and, and we're looking into the AARP fifty-five and open. Uh, these two call, they call experience work, and hopefully we can place someone there to, to help us. Uh, but yes, I understand.
Yep.
So, they, a lot of, uh, food factories, and Dr. Miller's here, they work with volunteers, uh, and, uh, so we may have to ask the public to, for some help and, and volunteers. But I understand it, it's better to have a, a stable workforce, somebody who's there knows that, I, I completely understand. So, do we leave those positions there, increase our, our, our budget deficit? Those are the choices we're gonna have to make, I mean, make it's
It's hard.
Uh, one of the things that, uh, you know, where they, was, I was considering just alternative, uh, situations is, you know, we're, we're already at, you know, we're blessed, like the commissioner said, we're blessed, our employees are blessed with, uh, excellent benefits. The pay may not be the, the best, I think it's, it's, uh, I think it's comparable to other counties our size are even better, especially our law enforcement and emergency services. But, uh, our benefit packages, our retirement package, insurance is, is as strong as it gets. I think most employees with twenty years of service will end up earning, uh, taking more money home when they retire than when, when, when they were working. So, our benefit packages are incredible, uh, that is not being touched. But I did, uh, consider, maybe all of us pitch in a little bit with our insurance. They're basically, and I think Nellie can, can maybe inform us a little bit better, uh, how many actually use the insurance on, on a yearly basis? Uh, how many claims there are, and how, you know, we're, we're paying, uh, how much we're paying? Do we go to eighty percent, twenty? Right now, we're eighty-five fifteen. That would be bringing in additional hundred and fifty to hundred and seventy thousand dollars in savings, if we all pitched in a little bit more. Now, most of us would not be happy, and employees don't make that much money, and you're thinking of taking fifty dollars more out of the paycheck? That's difficult, uh, so, I, every scenario you look at, it, it pays pain.
And that's where, you know, are we, you know, because if we, if we look into, I know you said you had a different budget, you have worked on a different
Well, I, 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 I call it the hard budget, uh, you know, it's like, yeah.
But, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, are we gonna affect, is it gonna affect a few? Or the decision we make is gonna affect the whole county, the whole, uh, county employees as a whole? That's, that's what we're looking at, where to get the future of Zapata County. Uh, are we gonna have money in the savings or are we not? Uh, so is it, you know, to me, it's definitely, uh, it's hard, Judge, but my recommendation would be to eliminate one position from each department across the board.
In the general fund.
In the general fund. We, I think, uh, this would definitely be the best interest for the future of Zapata, the employees that stay behind. Uh, it's not an easy decision, but we have to take care of that.
I appreciate you, uh, uh, trying to address that, Commissioner, because, yeah, it's, it takes a lot of fortitude to, I, I ran those numbers and certainly we're a position, we don't, we don't want to hurt anyone, but I understand.
Definitely not, Judge, but that'll keep us in the black, that'll allow us to give future cost of living, uh, increases, like we mentioned. Or are we gonna stay stuck at the same salary, you know, talk about we, the employees, are we gonna stay stuck with the same salary for the next twenty, thirty years? And so we've got to decide all those factors. Now, are we gonna continue with this budget and eliminate the three, four million dollars that we have, and then what? We're still gonna have to make those cuts.
No, that, that, that day is coming, as, as we, uh,
Those cuts will still have to be made. So, I mean, it's a decision, do we make it now or three, four years from now?
And the question that I have, like, I was looking at the budget, I mean, we're here trying to save money, but yet I see some departments getting an increase in, in supplies, uh, lubricants, fuel. So, how are we, are we increasing in different areas? I'm thinking of cutting road and bridge, I know we are, so how are people getting increased if we're trying to save money here?
I, I rely on those numbers on, uh, the expenses that were being incurred with the budget analysis. I spoke with, you know, one of the, I guess, side effects of OLS, uh, we would have to change, uh, programming or software, uh, or court administration software. It's expensive, uh, the county attorney, uh, did not have funds to, so his supplies went up just to cover those expenses.
Yeah, his went up.
Yeah. Yeah, so that
From eight thousand to seven thousand.
Because his, his expense for that is almost eight thousand dollars. So, he's had, he had to, uh, so that's the reason behind that expense.
I, I, I understand that, I mean, we all need money, but I mean, you're, you're saying that we have all these positions, but yeah, we're giving
He's gotta agree with it.
More money, makes sense.
Yeah, and those, there's a few like that, most of them were stayed the same or got cut, some old supplies, and I can, that, I, I know that one.
Yeah, because I mean, if you put it all together, I mean, one part of it
Yes, Fernando, you can step up, Fernando, our junior operation who kept the same budget as last year's, as our current year's.
I guess, uh, on my end, on that regard, my line items are changing, but I'm keeping the same budget for us as you guys, uh, I explained last time. So, fifty-one percent of our funds come from the county and then forty-nine percent come from the state. There is a local match that we have to meet. So, my local match, it's going up this year, um, this previous fiscal year was two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and change. It's going up to two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And we're at two eighty-four.
Two eighty-four.
Yeah.
So, now, um, and we need that wiggle room, and I can promise you, as, as an employee, like, once we hit the two seventy-five, I ain't spending the rest. The reason we need that wiggle room, we need a cushion, because all these are projections, like for, of fringe benefits, uh, for all the fringe benefits. Um, but I can tell you that much, like, for me, it's not like, oh, I need to spend all my county money. I just need to meet our local match, because if we don't, then we lose, uh, forty-nine percent.
And that's what
And then you guys can.
And that's what we have with SB twenty-two.
In general, I'm not assuming I anybody, I'm just saying, there's many departments that have those increases and it just raises
Well, I know.
Is it fully budgeted, like the budget, and it's rolling one up or just the line items?
You know, not everybody's like, hey, I'm not gonna touch you, you know what I mean, everybody just wants to blow it, you know?
I, I
So, I'm just trying to say is that, I'm just trying to make sense of us saving money, but yet increasing on other departments, you know, it doesn't make sense.
I think the increases are, are minimal, Commissioner, I don't think they add up to ten thousand dollars, but I can say that, uh, especially the county attorney is noticeable. But, uh, he didn't have enough money that they covered that software, so
And then
I included it, but we can try and remove it.
It's just a question I raised, I mean, that's what we're here for.
And, and we all definitely need the positions, uh, going back to, you know, what I was talking about, we all definitely need the positions. Uh, we all need extra help, but the question at the end of the day that we gotta ask ourselves, can we really afford it? You know, like I said, at the beginning of the meeting, we've been blessed to keep all these, uh, positions available for the employees. But, you know, there's a time when, you know, you gotta say, okay, you know, is it, is it time now? And I think the time is now. You know, so my, that'll, I don't know if I can make that recommendation at this point, Judge?
Yes.
I mean, that'll
Well, that, well, that, I would include your recommendation
Right, for the, for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah.
And this will eliminate one position across the board, uh, and if maybe, I know you said road and bridge is healthy, starting from myself, I, I am willing to do that as well. Uh, and, and get reduced from road and bridges as, as part of us as well, you know? And, uh, also all the part-timers, Judge, the part-timers, you know, I, I think the ones that you have eliminated are
Yeah, those have been
Yeah, so no part-timers, that would be my, my recommendation.
Commissioner, just to add that, it's one of those things to, you either cut them now or cut them later, but they're gonna be cut.
And when you cut them later, what happens? You're out of money.
Without the money. Yeah, either cut them now with the money or cut them later without the money.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, Fernando, yeah, I'm, I'm
On that regard, it's like, if I cut an employee, it's gonna put me way under
No, no, but, so, that, that'll apply to you.
Just, just to clarify, like, just, because people might say, it's like, oh, well
No, it's up for, from the general fund.
I gotta keep all my employees
Yeah, it's from the, you're, you're on, on the grants portion of it.
Yeah, you're not on the general, so, so it won't be anything from your
No, but what I'm saying is like, if I cut one of my employees, that, that it gets paid fully from county funds? Because I do have them set up that way, I have three employees fully from county and then the other three would be fully from the grants. It's
Because then you'd lose the entire funding, and it, it's similar to what the sheriff has with SB twenty-two. So, there, there may be some departments that we, you know, we'll have to, we can't do that, because we'll lose all the funding.
And, and just for clarification, whoever's watching, is this
We'll look into that one.
Yeah.
We'll look into, we'll buy second one.
Yeah, just so that people won't be like, oh, well, you didn't get it.
We'll buy second one.
Yeah, okay. Morning, afternoon, yes.
Good morning. Uh, Jesse, no, there's just so many, I'm the only employee in my department, so I won't
That's what he is.
They're safe.
They were safe.
I, I don't have any issue with my budget, I'm, I'm fine with, uh,
Jesse did suffer, cut, like, cut some of his travel, so, and he does travel quite a bit, so he's gonna have to ship some money's over.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. Uh, I just had one quick question, uh, last night I was looking through the budgets and, or earlier, y'all were talking about repairs and things like that. I don't have a line item for, uh, maintenance and repairs for the vehicle, so if it comes to that
You would come to court, yeah.
Yeah, you would come to court.
We'll take care of it through my department.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, since, then, yes, morning, good
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, uh, also, we're, we're okay with our budget. The only, uh, item that I did notice, Judge, is that we had discussed in, uh, the budget, uh, not the budget here, in the workshop.
Yeah.
On the, uh, turnout year, we have it proposed at ten thousand. We used to have it back in twenty twenty-four at eighteen thousand, we cut it down, and, uh, we had proposed to possibly put it back to eighteen for this year. Uh, and, uh, I understand the situation again, just like everybody else. And the only reason why is because of that new tanker that we got, it does not completely equip with everything. It does come with, uh, certain things, and we did have certain things, uh, already in stock at the department.
We can talk about that again.
But it's not enough to fully spec it out the way it's supposed to.
So, eighteen will cover that?
You don't have to do some purchases. And, and then
Uh, twenty-four, Commissioner.
And then for, for, for the next budget year, I think we'll be okay to bring it down to ten, just to bring that truck, uh, so it can be a hundred percent, uh, ready to go. I mean, it's ready to go, it has its hoses and everything, but it does need
You need to be there.
Yes, sir.
That's, so that, that would be, okay.
That's the only one, Judge and Commissioners, thirteen
I initially included in capital outlay, uh, for you to, you know, purchase that, but in the end, uh, you know, basically all that was left in capital outlay, which is page, uh,
So, you're asking from ten to eighteen?
Thirty's.
Forty's.
Forty. Well, basically, the only thing left in capital outlay is, uh, just some improvement for the courthouse, five thousand dollars to continue trying to maintain the exterior of it and, uh, the software program for your collection, then, you know, ESO.
I was gonna ask for, I was gonna, uh, question that part, if we were gonna be able to get it, or, so it's been put in capital outlay?
Yes.
And on that one, Judge, just, just to change the, the, initially, the first, uh, quote that I was given by ESO was fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six. But he was, they were able, they were able to bring it down with some discounts to eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. So, it's not gonna be the fourteen thousand.
So, and we have, so that rush truck or that, that pumper, when is our first payment due on that?
I don't want the first end as a grant?
Well, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, and I, I don't know, I think I had a schedule, it's thirty-something, thirty-four thousand, and it's gonna be due in May or something like that.
Okay, so
And the two hundred and fifty thousand we already sent off, that's one of the
Well, the first, first initial payment was two hundred and fifty, but that's
That's right, but we're gonna have
That's gonna be the brand right, we're gonna get reimbursed it.
So, that meant sent already?
Yes, but the first, the one you're referring to, just the actual payment, payment, and the sixty-some thousand, and that's, that's not till next, uh,
No, we
Twenty, twenty.
I sent you that.
So, we need to include that.
Yes, it's gonna be twenty, twenty, yeah, May, I think.
May.
Right?
I believe so.
So, that's another sixty, what, sixty-five?
Sixty-five, I believe it is.
Sixty-five or thirty-four? Uh, that's, either I email me?
Okay, so.
And how much was your, um, how much was your software?
The software is eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-four with the device sets.
Okay, so we could put eleven thousand five hundred, we're gonna change that up.
Judge, also, just to confirm on the remount, on the the conversation that we had, so we're not gonna be putting in after.
How much is that remount?
The remount was uh two hundred and thirty thousand per remount and turnaround time is three to four months. Versus a new one is three hundred and sixty thousand and turnaround time is a year and a half to three years.
And what for uh financial option?
Oh, the financing options, uh, I haven't.
I think it's like fifty?
Yeah, like fif- fifty some uh thousand a year.
Okay.
But uh, I don't remember when we went to Edward.
I know we're gonna be eligible for uh a grant, new evidence, with the.
Yes.
The, but you need two, I I understand.
Well, no, 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 but what what I'm saying is the.
The turnaround.
Yeah, no, no, but what, uh, remember the conversation that we had when we went to Edward, they charged something that we might not put it with the budget, the remount? Because if some monies would possibly be free up from the.
Well, I think they just captured that from the CO, then it's gotta be for Rhode and Bridge.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Yeah, like it has to be what we asked for.
So then we 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 are gonna have to budget the remount then?
Yeah.
The budget.
So the financing, so we'll we'll put fifty. I thought maybe we could infuse some of those funds to.
Yes, 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 that's what we had discussed, but yeah, now that you say it has to be specifically for reimbursement, it's not that qualified.
Okay.
Judge. So, um, it is May first and it's that second row, it's uh twenty-five thousand, what, thirty?
Thirty-five, four twenty?
Yes.
So thirty-six.
For the principal plus, and then the interest is, right there, six thousand.
Oh, so it's uh, it's about forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
No, it's thirty-five, it's a payment amount, thirty-five thousand.
Oh, yes, and the other one, sorry, the interest.
Sorry, thirty-five, four twenty.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, four twenty.
Yeah.
And that's for the, for the tanker, is it?
For the tanker.
For the tankers. Do May first.
May first.
And how much?
We'll have to do that in the capital outlay.
And how much are you requesting for the remount?
That's what I'm looking for.
We're gonna try to budget fifty grand for the remount.
Three?
For the payment.
Oh, okay, yeah, for financing.
We're gonna have fi- we're gonna have to finance it.
And that's in capital outlay?
Yes.
And if it's fifty-five thousand of payments on the.
Fifty-five?
The remount.
Okay, okay, fifty-five.
And I'm sorry, and then we had also put in, uh, on the workshop, the for the skate unit, uh, which was forty thousand for a skate unit for the brush truck, for one of the brush trucks. But it's just.
We might have to wait on that one, yeah.
That is fifty-five, I understand, I just wanna make sure and bring it up.
All right.
All right, thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
Sheriff, on the twenty twenty-six grant OLS, it it did you budget for, I know, patrol cars on? We did, Judge. Okay, good. I believe like six. Okay. About six. But if 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 everything goes well, and we get the ones from this year, then we can get more than that, but it is budgeted. All right, thanks, yeah, so, yeah, we're we're needing patrol cars also, so. And we need.
What are your question? Judge, also, we gotta be careful with the matching grants as well for the future. I mean, we don't have, you know, we're talking about the amount that we have in the savings, so we've just gotta be very careful with the grants.
I agree.
You know, are we gonna be able to afford, you know, to pay our portion of the match?
Yeah, well, the ones currently that we have in 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 the pipeline, we're we're good with those.
Yeah, those are for the CO, but I'm talking about future.
Future, we have to.
You know.
That formula in our CO that covers for some of those, it's not gonna cover all of them, so.
You know how much we have in the CO?
Three point nine.
No, no, I'm not, not a fan, not a fan, not a fan of what exactly.
Well, as a June.
Yes, a number for most. So that we can know exactly what we have, so.
Yeah, as of June, it's three point nine four nine, but we might use some of it.
Well, I know we use it.
We use that.
We had, um, in the last budget analysis that I got, it was maybe a week and a half ago, we had used up almost three hundred thousand.
Okay, so three point seven, all right.
Judge, I have the numbers.
So, yeah, we need to keep track on it.
I I'm keeping, as how you requested, I I created a spreadsheet for it.
I I found the email just to be exact on the on the payments for the evidence, it's a five years annual payment, zero down, as approximately fifty-five thousand four hundred and two dollars with cents and cents. Those are annual payments.
Is it five, four oh two?
Four oh two instead of your answer.
For five years?
Five years, yes, sir. Two ninety-seven thousand. Yeah.
Two seventy-seven, thirteen eighty-five.
With interest already.
So we're already probably four hundred thousand. Yeah, and those are, we can't do without, so.
I have the numbers for the elections equipment.
Do I go election equipment?
I don't know.
Yeah, um, it's, it's, this includes a discount, okay, it's a hundred and ninety, nine forty-four.
Have you, over five years financed maybe forty thousand?
Yeah, they, once we sign the contract, they will help us with the financing, they will help us get, you know, find a a a company that will finance. And in additional, in addition to that, I need ten thousand four hundred and ten per year for the licensing and the 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 service.
So that would be in your budget, the ten thousand extra on your license?
Well, I I have thirty thousand, but that only leaves me twenty to run the elections, that's not enough, I don't.
That's not, so you would need an additional, if you have thirty, you would need forty?
You have thirty, you need forty, that's that?
You need ten thousand dollars more for the license for the electric machines.
Per which a year?
Yeah, per year.
Per which a year, the only thing is that I don't think this one, I don't need it, I don't think I need it right now. Not for the, maybe not for this year, because I wanna say that it's gonna start the the following year, yes.
We don't need it.
No, no, I don't, that's okay, I don't, I'm not, I don't. The original amount, I believe, was like two hundred and twenty-seven thousand and they cut it down. Now, we did apply, I did apply for a, uh, have a election security grant, I applied for, I wanna, I think it was thirty-nine thousand. It is a matching grant, uh, we would get, we haven't heard back, but we, the federal share would be thirty-two five and the match would be sixty-five hundred. So that will cut about thirty thousand from the.
From the one ninety.
From the one ninety. And I wanna add that cutting one person from my personnel would be a hardship, especially during election times, because I'm gonna be out one clerk. And that would only leave.
Yeah, they deserve.
Two per, two persons.
It's painful, that, I understand.
We won't be able to do it, because we not, it's not just elections that we do during election time, we still have everything else that we do every day. So just take that into consideration.
Yes.
And the equipment would comply with the auditable paper trail requirements of twenty twenty-six. We can't wait any longer, we stretched it as long as we could.
We got our request, we got our marching orders, we got, we're making those budgets, issues and these extra requests, any other issues, any requests?
I just have one, on my repairs and maintenance, I'm at fifteen hundred dollars. But just with my copier, it's over, you know, two thousand, so I was just requesting if it could be brought up to three thousand.
From fifteen, huh?
From fifteen to three?
From fifteen hundred to three.
Three years, the ink and stuff, paper and ink.
And yeah, so will that, have your, comment your question?
I think.
Circles and departmental, just make sure that that is the, I need that, those, uh, uh, need the money to fix up.
Well, yeah, I've already.
You're talking about it.
Okay. You're talking about it, so it's good.
And and I know you had a vacancy and of course your vacancy was eliminated in the proposed budget, so that'll be your.
That's what I'll be calling it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Judge, on on yours, they have one eighty-six, one seventy-one, and it went down to one forty-eight, that's the one you transferred to the sheriff's office, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, got you.
Yeah, that's a nine one one.
Yeah, I remember that.
In order to, I guess, be compliant with the, the rate of the rail's.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the Rhode and Bridge on ours, I mean, it's gonna be about five thousand for us, I mean, we're pushing it and, I mean, you know, I got a lot of roads and dirt roads, more than the other precincts. You know, and then on fuel, it's the same, and I'm already way over budget on fuel. 'Cause I mean, we have to drive these tractors over there to those roads and it's way in there. And like Andreas is about ten miles long, he maintained. Los Lobos is another six miles, seven miles. And Mal is another one. And Echo Lock is another one, you know, I have just too many to to take that cut, five thousand.
I just, we, like, the the Judge, uh, Rooney said we rely on on revenues for them for about, I would say thirty percent of of the actual revenue for the entire, uh, Rhode and Bridge Department. So I I JP Pixon one, I'm estimating a hundred and five, but we're not there yet this year. Uh, JP Pixon two, who usually brings in over a hundred, he's not there yet. Uh, JP Pixon three never reaches twenty-five thousand, they might get there, I'm I'm hopeful. And four, the same, I think they may be pretty close to being there, but, uh, you know, we we got, I think, a fund balance of two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if you wanna, y'all wanna put back to fifty, you just reduce our fund balance a little bit more. And if he's ready, don't come in, whatever, we're gonna eat it up, it, so it's basically.
But we need those fifty out that you're gonna take from the scholarship, I mean, we might as well put them in there, you know, because it's to maintain the road.
Well, we're, is that they're different funds, we're 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 closer from the general fund.
Yeah, 'cause I I I talked, the gentleman reached out to me and he was like, hey, man, we give a hundred and twenty-five thousand political contribution funds. So I don't know what that means, I've never heard of political contribution funds.
The the check you made out to the to the Zapata County.
No, but that's what he put, I mean, that's that's their line, the political contribution fund, one hundred and twenty-five thousand SFA Boys and Girls Club. And of course, to maintain the road, that was.
We we can, and certainly we can include all of those, we can reduce the amount, and uh, that would save, they'll get for the, but I don't think technically we go to Rhode and Bridge. Uh, we could, I I don't think there's, there's a problem with Rhode and Bridge funds being used for for a general fund. Technically, we could use general fund money to.
And I speak for my Rhode and Bridge, I mean, I I mean, y'all might not want the five thousand, I need.
Well, Judge, unless, it's not good to change funds like that, but it being money's, uh, 'cause I know, at the very beginning, when we, when this whole, uh, windmill, wind turbines, I think other, uh, counties have used those funds for Rhode and Bridge, I can ask other auditors about that, so.
So out of the two hundred and fifty thousand right there received, uh, so we were still including fifty thousand for Boys and Girls Club. Twenty-five thousand for, uh, the museum, which is done, uh, twenty-five thousand for the food pantry, and twenty-five thousand, uh, for, uh, the, uh. Just for the Boys and Girls Club?
For the country.
Country. For the Boys and Girls Club, we have fifty? Yes. Would we be able to cut that in half and put the twenty-five for the scholarships? Yes, we could, I don't know if the Boys and Girls Club can operate, I mean, we have board, so, it's that we were left holding a bag and the school district pulled out, it used to be, uh, forty and forty that we would contribute, the school district would contribute, but they decided that they were not interested in in participating, so we upped it to fifty.
As it is right now, um, as Boys and Girls Club Board. We're closing downside Ignacio's site, just because we don't have the numbers, we can't keep that site open.
No, I just wondered maybe if it's not. Yeah, I I, and that's why they did complete, uh, what we were, uh, 'cause I I think they'll, it'll, they'll be in danger of closing like they were before.
Have y'all looked for grants or anything to help y'all out with the girl club, y'all haven't gotten any yet?
Yeah, we do have some grants that are coming in for repairs and maintenance, doing like, you know, stuff that's needed and and upgrades. But, um, like, that's what we're.
And y'all are doing a a lot of fundraisers as well.
We're trying to, last year, we.
I know y'all are having, what, like a cook-off or something?
Mm-hmm, we're having a fall festival. Yeah, we had to, we weren't getting the, the registrations for ski chute, we had to cancel it completely. So we're there, that we lost about forty thousand dollars of funding that we rely on.
Yeah, it's, so yes, we've been funding the.
And and going back to what the Commissioner was.
We're helping the United Way and then other contributions that you get, but, yeah, it's, I mean, we've been funding them on a loan. The school district decided not to pursue it, and so we help out as much as we can. And I I think certainly the scholarships, we can fund it, half of the twenty-five thousand. It's just, when you're form, trying to formulate a budget and trying not to, uh, hurt, uh, employees, I mean, what do you do? I know if I pulled it from, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club, they'd probably close down.
Right, that's why, that was, to me, that was like the only option.
There's very limited options on how, you know, we can.
I think that was the only option that I was looking at, but I mean, if it's in jeopardy of closing, I'm not gonna.
Probably adding the number of scholarships.
Yeah, that's what I said, top ten instead of top thirty.
Instead of twenty-five thousand, fifteen thousand.
Something, yeah, have some.
Something for kids.
Continue that, I, I, you know, yeah, that's fine.
To add to something, you have to take it away from something else, like, if you want the five thousand dollars for each, you you have to think, you have to decide who are we gonna take it away from? That, you know, or the scholarships, okay, you're gonna get twenty, who are you gonna take it away?
I I was just trying to say, as many employees I could, uh, when I make those, yes.
Or, or yeah, or how, which employee, yeah, how many employees do I wanna remove, so we can pay scholarships?
In the end, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we were, uh, saving for employees, so it's three employees, four employees.
And that's mostly because of the fringe benefits, that right there.
It's still.
Sal salaries.
Yeah, with benefits, yeah.